I have a sign-up sheet. If anybody wishes to speak. Oh, you've got one already?
Well, that was for people who attended the info session, so if people want to sign up to speak.
Right, and the advantage is a court reporter will get your name, phone card.
Okay.
She's great, but she might miss it. So I'm gonna put it here. If you want to speak, just put your name. And then I've got this material for anybody.
That is assignment as you are here.
This is the case schedule. And these other two are telling you about intervention and the Citizens Guide to the Public Utility Commission. So you're welcome to take one of each of those.
If anyone needs to leave for any reasons, the library's closed. I have the keys, I'm just asking you.
Any sign-out books?
No, no.
We have our videographer here.
Ready to rock.
Okay, anybody signed in? Good evening, and thank you for being here. This is a Vermont Public Utility Commission public hearing in case number nineteen dash zero five one six dash P E T. A petition of Otter Creek LLC for a certificate of public good pursuant to thirty U S A Section forty-eight, authorizing the construction and operation of a two-point-two-megawatt solar electric generation facility in Bennington. My name is Anthony Royce, and I am the Chair of the Public Utility Commission. But for tonight and for this case, I am the hearing officer appointed by the commission. And just so there's no confusion about that, the way the Public Utility Commission works is hearing officers hear the evidence. Occasionally, the whole commission hears evidence, but the bulk of the cases are heard by hearing officers. And they write at the end of the case something called a proposal for decision. And that proposal for decision, if it's a contested case, is circulated to all the parties and to the public. And an opportunity is given for people to say, "I don't like what you decided," or "You made a mistake," or whatever it is. And ultimately, all of those proposals for decision are reviewed and have to be acted upon by the commission. Sometimes the commissioner agrees, and sometimes it disagrees with the hearing officer. Because I'm a member of the commission, now that I'm the hearing officer in this case, I will not be voting as a commissioner when and if there is a decision that I reach that goes up to the commission for review. That would apply if there's a dispute that arises during the proceeding, that a party wishes to have the commission review. The legal term is an interlocutory review, which means a review that takes place of something before the whole case is over. Anything that's done in the name of the commission will be done by the other two commissioners, Commissioner Cheney and Commissioner Hoffman. And you would only have me participate at that level in the way that hearing officers do generally, which is that we sit from the commission, we explain the basis for our decision, we answer questions, we participate in the discussion, and we either have the commission agree with this or not. And one of the anomalies of the way the Public Utility Commission works is that if the hearing officer said, "Do this," and the commission said, "No, no, we want you to do that instead," that same hearing officer has to write the justification for what the commission decided, even though it's contrary to what the hearing officer said. So, and that may sound a little strange. Normally, when you have an opinion, you get the whole dialogue. But I think what it represents is that our decisions don't represent our personal opinions. They represent our view of the evidence, and only the evidence that's in front of us. And reasonable minds can differ on whether or not that evidence is support or doesn't support, or whether the law supports or doesn't support a position. And so that is the reason why it is not quite so strange. And in my couple of years of commission, we've had maybe a dozen cases where the hearing officer's decision wasn't agreed with by the commission, and it got rewritten in a section of the final order called "Commission Discussion." And the commission would then explain why they didn't agree with something the hearing officer says. So that's the process. So I'm the hearing officer, and that's all my power. And I have to keep Commissioners Cheney and Hoffman happy, or they might not agree with me. All right, so we have, I recognize, except for this young woman and that gentleman back there, I recognize the rest of you from our tour of the site today. And they're representatives here, as you know, from the Vermont Department of Public Service. And the department is an automatic party in all proceedings. And their obligation is to represent the public interest. That's what they do in the case. And that, I don't want you to think that that means that your position, if it's not the same as their position, isn't also in the public interest. It's not like a prejudgment. It's just the way their mandate is written. There's a handout, there's sitting there actually several handouts, that provide information on how to file comments, how to read documents in the case, and also a separate sheet with a schedule for the proceeding. Let me just explain a little bit about how the process works, just from a process perspective. The commission has an electronic document system. And while you don't have to use it, we strongly encourage you, if you have the ability, in other words, you have a computer, you have internet connection, to use it. And here's how it works. Every document that gets filed in this case, everything, gets filed in the electronic document. You, whether you're a party or a member of the general public, you can subscribe to the, what's called EPUC, this electronic document. And the EPUC has a record and a copy of everything that got filed, whatever it may be. Detailed technical information, photographs, charts, all of that. And just a casual letter that someone might write in it and say something, one way or the other, about a proposed project. If you subscribe to EPUC, all you do is you just open an account, and it doesn't even require you to give any personal information, just a way to get you into EPUC. And say, "I want to subscribe to this case." You will get an email every time a piece of paper is filed in the case, whether it's some little letter that says, "I couldn't figure out where the Bennington Public Library is," which is what I would have written if I had access to EPUC, because I couldn't read it. But you'll get an email, and that'll give you a link. You press on that link, and you can then go to that document, you can read it, download it if you wish, print it out. And it gives you a way to keep information about the case present for you at any time. And that doesn't require you to be an intervener in the case, or a party, or anything like that. So that's one way in which you can participate in the case. Another way is what's happening tonight. You can submit comments in writing at any time. Orally tonight, this is the only public hearing that is going to be held in the case. And when you submit those comments, they're not evidence. For instance, if you walked these woods that are where the project is going to go, and you were hiking, and you said, "Gee, I just saw a blue fitch." And you go and you look, and A and R says, "Blue fitches are protected." You're not supposed to cut down any trees where blue fitches are. And you send a note into the commission, you say, "Hey, I was walking in the woods, I saw the beautiful blue fitch." That's not evidence. But it does raise an issue that the hearing officer might decide, "Hey, I'm gonna ask the people who have the expertise to tell me, is this a habitat for this blue fitch?" So I might ask A and R, I might ask the applicant, I might ask if there's a public intervener in the case. I might ask them, I might ask the department, and get information about that. If it's an issue that is very dependent upon facts or expert opinions, and you feel strongly about it, you probably want to be an intervener. Because the intervener then presents evidence. And evidence is made up of facts. So in my hypothetical, by the way, evidence is such a hypothetical thing. In my hypothetical, the person who made that statement, if they were a party, would file an affidavit. And the affidavit would explain, "It was this day, it was about that time, if they happen to have their cellphone with them, I got a picture of it, here's a picture." And they would then become a witness in the case. If the applicant or the department, A and R, thought that that was not correct, they would then have an opportunity to discover it, which means ask you for more information, or have you on the witness stand and ask you questions under oath on the witness stand or in deposition, which is the same thing as being on the witness stand, except it's not done in a hearing. It's under oath, the court reporter keeps a record of it, and the rest. And that then becomes a piece of evidence that I will have to evaluate. So, you know, did you see "My Cousin Vinny"? Did you see that movie? So in "My Cousin Vinny," you may remember that the witnesses who were eyewitnesses to the alleged murder by these two boys, they were cross-examined over the very question of, "What did you see?" Do you remember one was a little old lady whose vision wasn't so good, another was a guy who was looking through windows that were hard to see, and another guy's credibility was undercut because he claimed he saw it right after these guys had bought it to the store. And in fact, because of how long it took to cook his breakfast, there was quite a time. And all of that, that's what cross-examination is intended to do, to test the credibility of the fact witness or the expert. The expert might say, "Oh, you know, I've got a PhD in this, and I'm qualified in that, and I've testified in thirty-seven cases, et cetera, et cetera." And you still have questions to ask that witness about their credibility and how they form their opinion. We've seen cases where an expert has said, "There's something down there that's very dangerous, and they shouldn't be able to put any solar panels where that is." And it turned out, the expert never went down there. The expert knew the area, but never didn't know this particular area. Well, that made their opinion less persuasive than if the expert said, "Oh yeah, I went down there. I hiked around for a couple of hours, and I saw the dangerous situation that exists." And all of that goes into deciding the case when you have conflicting opinions or statements by people. So these documents that are up here, in addition to the one that tells you the case schedule, tell you how you can participate if you want to be an intervener. And then there's a deadline for intervention in this case, it's one week from today. And you can now go to EPUC. The applicant has filed extensive documentation in support of the application. And in fact, the commission will not open the case until it believes the application is complete. So there's been a preliminary judgment made by the commission, but the application is complete, which means that all the issues that have to be addressed have been addressed. So that's a good place, if you want to intervene, to go and look and see, "Is there something in there that makes me think that I want to object, or conversely, that I want to support this project?" Because the applicant has explained why the applicant believes it's in the public interest of the state of Vermont for this project and this location to be approved. So people can intervene and say, "Hey, that's great, I want that here." And people can say, "No, I don't want that here." So you have a rich resource, and you've got a week, if you haven't already looked at it, to look at that information and decide what you need to do. Written comments can be sent to us at any time, before the hearing, after the hearing, whenever you have a comment. And, you know, unless it's a comment that's already been addressed, we're going to ask the parties to respond to that. One caveat. Until I went on the, on this commission, became a commission a little over two years ago, the clients that I represented opposed projects in Vermont. It was a winter, while it was primary, and also represented the state in concerns about nuclear power plants. Obviously, that was in Vermont. So I've been on that side of these issues. And I know how deeply people feel on both sides. Applicants feel strongly, people who oppose projects feel strongly. And I expect that those will be reflected in filing. What I do not expect, and will not tolerate, is personal attacks. The people who oppose me in cases, I challenge what they said. I've never challenged their opponent. I never said, "This person is a bad person, or they're doing this for an evil reason." And I want these proceedings, if they are contested, in other words, if somebody intervenes and says, "No," I want them to be civil and respectful. And, because I'm not going to tolerate the filing of papers in which people are making personal attacks on someone who they disagree with. And I have no reason to believe that that's going to happen, but it's better that I tell you how I feel about that in advance than that you get an order issued by me saying, "Your filing has been rejected because..." So that's my statement. Let me just make sure that... Oh, another thing. This proceeding tonight has been transcribed by a court reporter. And because she is so good at her job, in just a couple of days, we will have the transcript. It amazes me that she's able to do this. And it'll be posted on our website, and it'll be put in EPUC. So you will be able to look at it, share it with friends, and do whatever you like with it. In addition, once a transcript is prepared, I will prepare a summary of the major points, not necessarily identifying the speaker, but just identifying what were the issues that were raised. And that'll be posted on our website. And the website for the Public Utility Commission is readily available. I think it's P U C dot gov. Does that sound right?
Dot Vermont, dot com.
Oh, yeah, in here, in one of these documents, it tells you what our website is. So you will see it posted. The last thing is, you'll see there's a proposed schedule. And that proposed schedule is developed by the parties who are automatically in the case, like the department, like the Agency for Natural Resources, like the Agency for Agriculture and Farm Marketing. That is not a fixed-in-stone. Once, if there are intervenors in the case, and there are contested issues, you'll see that schedule basically says, within a week after that, the parties need to get together and come back with a schedule that accommodates the fact that we now are going to have a contest, we're going to have a disagreement. And so if you intervene, and if your intervention is accepted, that's a decision I have to make, and the documents that are there explain to you what the criteria are for intervening. Then you will have a relatively brief period of time, but more than adequate, to come up with a schedule. And the schedule will have a lot more steps in it than this schedule does, because at this point in time, this schedule was developed on the premise that there wasn't going to be any opposition. It didn't foreclose if the department, after further study, decided that they were going to oppose, or they wanted a condition, and the applicant said, "We're not going to accept that condition," then even though they agreed to a schedule for an uncontested case, it would then become a contested case, and they would have their views on the new schedule. In general, what that schedule will be is that there'll be an opportunity for discovery, which means you can ask for information from any party in the proceeding. And you can ask it by asking them questions, you can ask it by asking them the documents, you can ask it by doing the deposition, which means bringing somebody in front of a reporter, like our reporter here tonight, and transcribing your questions, and that person's answer. I issued an order in this case on the twenty-third of May that laid down some ground rules that are relevant to a case that is a contested case. One of them has to do with discovery. It puts a limit on how much discovery anybody can ask of anybody else. And it follows what are now the rules of the Vermont Federal Courts, which tells, follow the rules of the federal courts on discovery, and how you can conduct it, and what limits there are. That also will put a limit on how long a plea is going to be, how many pages it'll be. Now, every rule like that, even including the ones that are written in the statutes, are always subject to change. If you want something to happen that isn't what you want, you have to ask for it. And I have a personal fetish, if you will. I don't like people writing letters to the clerk of the commission and saying to the clerk, "Here's what I want." Our clerk doesn't make substantive decisions. So if you want to ask for something, feel free to do it. I'll entertain any petition that anybody files. But write it up as a legal pleading with a caption, and the name of what it is, it's a motion, it's whatever. And send it into EPUC. And if you want to put a cover letter, that's fine, but the cover letter should just say, "Dear Ms. Whitney," that's our clerk, "find attached my motion for," or "my opposition to," or whatever it is. Don't write it as though you think that Ms. Whitney is going to be the one to answer you, because it's not going to be fixed. Or I think, I think that's a...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Chris though. So this is a bit of an unusual circumstance, where you're acting as the hearing officer, and you're recusing yourself from your commission at all. Will there be a proxy? Will you be appointing a proxy to the commission, and we'll just be the two commissioners?
At this point, it would just be the two.
Okay. I just want to understand the process. And if there's a disagreement between the commissioners, what happens?
We have an arm wrestling contest. I got a little back pressure from my fellow commissioners because of a recent decision that we issued. I wrote a dissent, and they said, "I couldn't remember anybody dissenting." And I said, "Well, I disagreed with what you did." And so I would say it's a rarity that that would happen. And candidly, we've not crossed that bridge. I've raised that question, what would happen? I mean, what would happen if somebody got sick? I mean, they weren't able to participate as a commissioner, and the governor had to fill the spot. There's no provision in our statute to allow us to bring in, say, like a retired commissioner, to fill that role. Courts do that a lot. Because Vermont Supreme Court sometimes will have a retired justice come and sit on a case where... And they have five, so it's less likely to happen with us. Right now, we're just the most...
Okay.
Any other questions about all this process stuff, before you tell me what you have to say?
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Yes. Great information, thank you.
Good, all right, well, as I said, I've been in front of commissions a lot in my life. And I know how frustrating it is to walk in and not understand what's going on. Sometimes I felt like I was in Russian, and they were speaking Russian, and I don't speak syllabic at all. And so I feel like I'd like everybody to understand as much as possible. Okay, so the floor is open. Would anybody like to speak?
Say your name before you start, please.
Okay, I guess, Martha Wilds is my name. I am co-owner of the Howard Hill Motel, the owner, and co-owner. Scamla Park, who was participated in the early recital, so... So just a few things, we have a few concerns that I just wanted to voice here. First and foremost, VIEW as a hospitality business, and I think that the public house has the same concern, is that VIEW is, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but that's my understanding. VIEW is of paramount importance to our business. And so if the VIEW is impacted at all, it's going to be a, you know, we like to say we're just a little motel in the middle of the country, you know, countryside, and it's very bucolic. And so people love us, and they come back year after year for that. So there's, you know, a couple of other concerns that we have. First of all, that it wasn't, this wasn't a preferred site in accordance with the town plan. And that was, you know, that is concerning, because we assume that that, the selection of preferred sites is, you know, that there's certain criteria to be met for that. So not being experts in that, though, that is a concern for us. We're concerned about the tree removal, just in general. Just, we're big advocates of summer, but we're a little confused about the wooded areas being taken away. And, I mean, because there are carbon sinks, obviously, that are being removed. So we're a little, I don't know, just puzzled by that, by that decision. Again, from an expert point of view, of course, we're concerned about the wildlife. There are bats, there are flying squirrels, there are migratory birds that we see on the property all the time. We have a pollinated woodpecker in residence. We have, we've seen indigo bunnies just this past spring. So just lots of wildlife. I'm sure the bunnies are going to be fine, no matter what, but I'm not sure about the other ones. So also, we're concerned about the noise during the construction period, which will probably coincide with our busiest season. So we're just afraid that that might impact our business. And now, I'm just wondering about the sheep as lawn mowers, and whether they'll be loud in the middle of the night. I don't know how many sheep will be there, and whether or not we'll be able to even hear them from the motel with a hundred-foot vegetative barrier, I think, probably not. But again, no expert on that, and that is a concern for us. And let's see, I think that's about it. But I think the other kind of esoteric concern, I guess, I have is like, what will not... have is like, what, well, not, that's not really esoteric, practical concern, I would say, the opposite. Esoteric. Just if, if all of these things that are in the plan and the vegetative buffer that we're kind of envisioning, if it doesn't happen the way that we've kind of come to understand it and we do have issues with the VIEW or with noise or whatever, what is our recourse? And that's more of a, I don't really know, but we've talked about it amongst ourselves and we just don't know what our recourse is then if our business is impacted. So...
Can I just ask you one? So I'll make sure I understand the point. Are you saying if we issue an order and say yes, and we write the conditions and we say you got to do A, B, C, and D?
Right.
Are you asking the question, what if they don't do one of those things? Do you have a recourse? Or are you asking a different question, which is?
I'm asking two, really two questions. One is the first one that you just said, and the second is sort of like, what if it's not what we kind of under, like, what if there is a business impact, I guess, is what I'm saying? If what I'm hearing is this hundred-foot barrier and the fence is inside it and there's not going to be disruption to our business, but what if there is? What if we do that? So I think that's about it. Those are, and again, we're advocates of renewable energy all the way, you know, just don't want to be, you know, too competitive or anything, so.
Now, Ms. Lo, normally we don't turn these into a debate, but we have a small audience and we've got a lot of time. You don't have to say anything here if you don't want to, and you'll have plenty of opportunity in the course of the hearing, but you are entitled if you want to say anything.
What was your name last name?
Michael Moll.
That's in the L O A.
Yeah, with respect to the sheep, we'll have to get you that information because, like I said earlier, I just don't know how noisy they are, especially at night. Some of your other concerns with respect to the buffer and say, you know, our plan's called for the hundred-foot buffer, but what if that, you know, what if that, the trees come down somehow?
Right, or whatever, yeah.
So I think the way it's supposed to work in theory is there's a commission procedure for landscape mitigation plans. We would build that buffer into the plans as part of the overall aesthetic mitigation. And the commission, you know, they require you to keep those things in place. You just can't, they just can't go away. So it's our obligation to make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing.
And can I add to that?
Sure.
With respect to aesthetics, there is a report available that our consultant prepared, but the state has also hired their own consultant to verify that. So you will be able to gain access to those documents.
Okay, good. And that will be in the E docket that you talked about.
Yes. In fact, their report is already there as part of their filing, so you can take a look at it. It is not unusual in the contested cases that as issues get raised, supplemental testimony gets submitted, both by intervenors, sometimes by the department, sometimes by the applicant. So all of that is, it's going to possibly be supplemented as concerns are raised. Anybody else?
Yes, I speak. Mary Morrissey.
Mary, would you like to come and sit up closer?
I would probably prefer here if you can hear me.
It's the court reporter I'm worried about.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear.
Okay, great.
Felicia.
Okay, thank you, good. First and foremost, as a select board appointed member of our Towns Airhawk Energy Committee, they changed the actual town plan in regards to our energy policy. I was sued by the loans, as were many others. So I am very concerned about Bennington's citizens participating in this process. As you may know, our select board, planning commission, regional planning commission, from another project, the Apple Hill Homeowners Association, Libby Harris and many, and Amanda State and the original developers of the Apple Hill have all been sued by this development. Most of the people and entities that have been sued were active participants in the puck process.
In the what?
Puck, EPUC, yeah, as you know, I'm sorry.
Car.
We have two important businesses and an adult daycare facility, of which I am a longtime board member, that have interested, possibly affected, and we are really worried about, oh my heaven, if we intervene in this case as interested persons. In regards to our town plan, unfortunately, the select board appears to have sold out our town plan, and we put, and we put a lot of work into our town plan. So as a member of the Airhawk Energy Committee that worked on preferred sites and the energy plan, and by the way, this site was not in the preferred site zone, I want to make sure that our town plan is considered in this proceeding. And from the aesthetic evaluation, the public house could not be here. Steve Bryant asked if I would make these comments. I know they are concerned with the aesthetic evaluation and that it was not considered the views from their deck were restful. They recently made a major investment in the deck and expanded seating area, and as indicated on their sign, the site is all about the view. As far as property values and some impact that may be negative with regards to the project, and I hope they're not, because I may also tell you I'm very much in favor of renewable energy, and so it's even hard, heavy this, you know, full discussion, heavy concerns about it, but we do have valid concerns. Bennington is very challenged by the PFOA contamination, the recent closing of Southern Vermont College, and property values are a major concern. As a representative of this area, I am very concerned about what can happen to property values as a result of this project and this developer's plan to cut the forest behind the Howard Hill Motel. Also, I can imagine that the cumulative impact of all of this solar development, turning a beautiful forested hillside into a field of glass and metal, may have a negative impact on the town's already stressed groundness. We simply cannot afford more damage to our community, and I hope this will be considered as one of the laws.
Thank you. And I could hear you fine.
I'm sorry?
I said I could hear you fine.
Thank you.
And I don't hear all that well, so.
I would just like to reinforce the fact that this is an industrial-y zone parcel. You know, we hear a lot of people that object to these types of projects that always caveat, "We're not against renewable energy, we're for renewable energy." But I would say in this case, it's now a preferred zone. It's an industrial-y zone property. So if not on a property like this, where, is all I would say.
May I comment?
Sure.
I want to ask you.
Oh, yes, sure.
Actually, the committee that I was on, the Airhawk Committee, actually identified almost 500 acres in Bennington community, an area that are preferred sites. And so, you know, I think obviously we had hoped that some of those sites would be considered.
Most of those are public property, though.
I'm just going to address that there seems to be a lot of confusion with respect to what constitutes a preferred site, and it's not the clearest town plan on this point. There are the maps that you designated, but you also designated criteria by which other sites could be qualified as preferred. So we're talking about the latter category. So Martha, you mentioned that it's not a preferred site, but it absolutely is.
Would that be also applicable to the site that's adjacent, the additional parcel that is not under consideration right now, but?
Correct.
That also applies to that rural?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, I don't know what the criteria are, but I, I guess, if not where, maybe not on a board, a place that's heavily wooded. I mean, I don't know. I mean, it is Vermont, but that would be my...
Well, it sounds like we have an issue.
What?
It sounds like we have an issue.
Yes.
And you all have an opportunity, if you become a party, to put in evidence on both sides of this, and obviously I will have to decide it. I don't think we should debate.
Yeah, and I do not claim expertise. I read about it and everything, so, but do not claim my expertise, but what little knowledge I do have indicates that trees are something kind of we want for the environmental benefit they bring.
Could I just make one final comment?
Yes.
Is that our plan was approved and it was taken very serious as to the criteria that we looked at for each piece that we put into place. So it was approved by a regional commission with the time it was the, I guess, on behalf of the state, the officials that approved it. So we didn't take it lightly. We weren't just picking that site because it was considered, you know, on the long side of that, wouldn't do that anymore. So it was approved based upon, you know, the...
Based upon what?
The merit of proposing a plan that was approved.
Well, I'll give you this assurance. We're going to study this carefully.
Thank you.
And we're going to look at it and try to come to what we think is the right judge. Any other comments?
Yes. I, my name is Diana Leiser, and I live in Apple Hill, and I've been a part of this whole saga from the beginning. And my concern with the site plans and the mockups of vegetation and sites and how they're going to be buffered and that when a site plan is drawn up, it's, it is never, so if you've got, if you've got an undulating landscape, how are we supposed to know unless we're there physically what it's going to look like when it's cleared and, you know, if things can't be seen? So unless you've got, like, Mary was requesting a balloon or, you know, a big orange stake or something that says, "This is where, this is this site and this is how it's, what you're going to see. This is the height of what you're going to see." How can you really tell that that site plan, that aesthetics plan, is really going to solve the issues that are at the forefront of this whole discussion? I mean, I've been a resident of Bennington almost my entire life, born and raised here. And as Mary said, this town faces a lot of challenges, and what we depend on are tourists and tourism and the other dollars that come from out of this state. And without that, our livelihoods are in jeopardy, to say the least. I mean, there's not that much industry left in this town. And, you know, other, you know, there's not going to be any economic benefit to this town for this solar project. No one's going to come in, there's not going to be any jobs created. So that's not going to be a positive for us. I also have a concern about the number of trees that are going to be cut down and the carbon uptake that they would have as opposed to whatever solar fields may generate. My concern also is the length and the amount of litigation that has been, that has been, that has been undertaken to, to keep the public, I feel, in my opinion, from participating in this process. As Mary said, our association has been sued, and owner of property who is dead has been sued in our development, and we're here not, I mean, if I could have solar panels on my house, I would, but I can't because I live in the woods. And what we're here doing is we're not fighting, it's not in a knot in my backyard. We're here fighting for what's right for our town and what's right going forward for the citizens of the state. It's not right for Big Solar to come in and buy up our state. And, you know, it's just not, and we shouldn't be bullied. And there's something here that I need to read, and I can't read it without glasses, and hopefully I have some. Okay. I think one of the things is the impact of all of the solar projects that are going to, that are being proposed and what the impact of that view would be from the country club. And again, we need to have a real simulation of what that solar array would look like that people can really understand and not arrows from above, not something that's, or someone that says, you know, "It's going to be this, it's going to be that." It has to be real that people can feel good about because when, on one of those site plans, you can see nothing. You know, it doesn't make any sense, and, you know, you guys have said it's going to be one way. But in other arrays around the state, there have been other things that have been said, you know, "There's going to be no burning." Well, there's been burning. So, you know, that's a concern as well. Also, I have some photos here of what it may or not, may not look like from the country club. There's never been a single simulation from the perspective for Apple Hill or Chelsea Solar that has been from the country club. So, you know, it's, the country club has concerns. I believe at this point, the public house is going to intervene, and we have real concerns, and we need to have things a lot more concrete than what they are now.
If I might add, Mr. Chairman, John Bravant, Vermont's for Clean Environment. I think the issue, the larger issue will be when these individual projects, their individual LLCs, are in some total, constructed, what will be the some total cumulative effect on the aesthetics. If you look at everything piecemeal, you're going to get, come away with a different set of conclusions, and if you look at these develop- And if you look at these developments cumulatively, I know that is what Act 250 looks to. That's why Act 250 likes to see, um, the, the larger buildout. I forget what they call it, the development plan, if you will, in terms of projects when they go through phases because they wanna know what the overall cumulative effect is rather than piece by piece by piece. And all of a sudden, it's a different outcome than any individual decision anticipated. So I think that's kind of the concern. And what will the cumulative effect be from that? Right now, still impressive view from that country club. I mean, one of the values going to that country club and playing golf is not just to hit the ball across the green, but it's to enjoy the view shed around you. I, I know that there's been a minimization and almost demonization of, not by these developers necessarily at all, but just generally by the development community that, "Oh, views aren't important, aesthetics are, are very low importance." You know, if you go south of Vermont, you'll see what low importance aesthetics approaches have resulted in. Basically, the entirety of the ninety-five corridor from the Mass border, ninety-one, all the way down to Florida is wrecked. And this is all we got left. We're hugging the border now. And I would ask that the commission take note of this being the last vestige of what's, was once a beautiful country.
Any other comments?
I, I'd like to address some of the issues that were raised. When we talk about benefits to the town of Bennington, I think it's unfair to characterize that there are no benefits to the town of Bennington.
I didn't say that.
Say that. What was, what was the word?
I said there was, that we're not gonna be... I understand what you're gonna say about the, you know, paying taxes, all of that kind of stuff, but it's not gonna create jobs. And we've been told over and over again that it's gonna create jobs. It's not. I understand there's gonna be some property taxes paid.
Yes, there will be property taxes paid.
And that's good.
And I know there's a lot of concerns over view sheds. Obviously, that'll be addressed, it has been addressed through our aesthetics report. Whether or not everyone chooses to believe that expert, that will be rebutted by the state's experts. So you'll have an opportunity to review that. And I understand everyone's concerns with these kind of views in Vermont. But I would say that for us, climate change is a much more important issue than view sheds. And I listened to you, so you're gonna listen to me. I'm gonna read an excerpt.
I wasn't saying anything.
You really should address the chair, sir.
I'm gonna read an excerpt from a...
Mr. Braveman, if I think he's doing something wrong, I'll go ahead.
From a Time article. There was recently a United Nations report that was issued on climate change. And the report called climate change "an urgent and potentially irreversible threat to human societies on the planet." And warned that delayed action would make it impossible to limit warming of our climate to two point seven degrees Fahrenheit. While the pace of that change would be required to limit warming to two point seven can be found in the past, there's no historical precedent for the scale of the necessary transitions, in particular, in a socially and economically sustainable way. Resolving such speed and scale issues would require people's support, public sector intervention, and private sector cooperation. And we're talking about, this report talks about by twenty fifty, potentially fifty percent of the species on this planet becoming extinct if we don't take action. And while we may not all be alive, my children will.
I, I find that really egregious that you could say something like that. I had, I didn't say anything personal about you. I...
That wasn't personal against you either.
No, let me speak, please. I didn't interrupt you.
Okay, I, I need you guys to dial it back.
Yes.
I don't, anybody's trying to insult anybody.
Yep.
I'd like you to follow a rule that my late wife used to her, she called the OD, benefit of the doubt. Don't assume that anybody either is trying to say something that is wrong or that is intended to be an attack. Just stay with the merits. I'm not gonna let this debate go on much longer.
Yes.
But I'll be interested in your testimony if you all decide.
I, I certainly am aware of the issues of climate change and work very hard in my community to solve those issues. And I find it egregious that you're, that what has been said has been akin to "not in my backyard." Well, that's not the case. I'm fighting for my state, for my town. And I certainly do agree with solar in its many facets. And I believe that there are places where solar, large solar arrays are appropriate. I don't believe in, I don't, I don't hold with the fact that this company is going to be a good neighbor and follow through on what they say they're going to do. We have been in this fight a long time. It's never been about "not in my backyard." It's not in my backyard. I can't see it from my house. Ninety percent of my neighbors can't see Apple Hill or Chelsea from my house. I can't see Warner from my house. It's not in my backyard. What it is, is in my state, affecting my state, my town, and my fellow citizens. And I get that you wanna come in and you wanna make some money and you want to sue everyone that disagrees with what your, um, your goal is. Well, we are a very stubborn population and we don't give up easily. And so I understand that you want to save the world, so you save for your children, which is a noble goal. However, that doesn't mean that the other concerned citizens in this room and the state and the town don't want to do the same thing. And so it's not necessary to remind us what state the world is in. We're all pretty aware of that, especially in this green mountain state.
Any other comments?
There's, there was a couple of comments about the net impact of clearing of trees for these facilities. And I, I'll just point you to, part of the testimony that we filed in Warner is a overall greenhouse gas analysis. And that'll give you some of the answers.
Thank you.
Sir? No? Any other comments? All right, well, thank you all very much. This is gonna be an interesting proceeding. As a judge, I'm looking forward to it. And after some of this quasi heated exchange, what I'm gonna say next may sound a little inappropriate. The Public Utility Commission has a mediation project, pilot project that the legislature has asked us to pursue. And the goal of the mediation project is twofold. One, to provide an opportunity with the help of a mediator, not any one of, no member of the PUC or its staff, to provide an opportunity for people to see where, if at all, they have any common ground. And see if they can then reconcile differences that either address someone's concern that wouldn't, on the other side, wouldn't feel that they had given up their concern. And alternatively, to sharpen what the areas of disagreement are. Nobody wants a hearing that goes on longer than what should go on. It costs the intervenors, it costs the state agencies, certainly costs the applicant, and there are expensive processes. So mediation is one way to either resolve an issue or at least narrow the scope of it so that you know what it is you wanna fight about. And can sharpen that up so that our hearing is focused. We also have as sort of part of that, and in this case, we do use hearing officers, what we call a facilitator. And the facilitator is not mediating. That is, he's not trying, or she's not trying to get the parties to come to an agreement, but to facilitate the parties moving forward. Ultimately, a hearing is like a, it's like a play. And you can have a play with, with different roles and then they be antagonistic to each other. But the play is not well received if the people who are the actors and actresses in the play aren't working together to make sure that the play gets its message across. So the person who's playing this position in the play needs to make sure that the play gets their position across. And this person who has a different position, there's this controversy that makes up the play, needs to make sure that their position gets across. So facilitator would be someone to help move that along so that everybody gets a fair chance, everybody gets heard, and things don't get in the way that shouldn't get in the way. So if you all have any interest in anything like that, you just need to let me know. If it's mediation, I would make sure that you have an mediator that you could talk to. If it's facilitation, I can make sure that a different hearing officer who would be walled off from the, would, uh, could be available to facilitate things. And sometimes the advantage of the, think of a facilitator like a, a marriage counselor. The goal of the marriage counselor is not to try to get the wife and the husband to agree about something that they appear to disagree about, but to help them better approach whatever it is they're disagreeing about. So I want you to know those services are available. If they are used, they are walled off from a hearing officer. So if you used it, whether it's a mediator, facilitator, it would never come to me. You could talk candidly in front of this third person and not worry, "Oh, now the hearing office who knows that I could do X or I could do Y." And, and I'll give you an example of a case and you, you might wanna take a look at the case. It's not like this case, but it is a large solar project. It's in Middletown Springs. And Middletown Springs had a proposal for a large, not as large as this, five hundred KW, so about one-fifth the size of this project, solar array on a hillside. And people who lived opposite the hillside, there being a valley in between, were objecting because they didn't like the view. And when the applicant made their application, they said there were two other places that they might have put the project. One, which would have been less in these people's view, but was, had a lot of ledge, which meant it would require a lot of construction, preparation work that was expensive. And the other had a wetland that would make it impossible to get approval to build there. Not supposed to build these wetlands. And the commission went out at the request of one of the parties and did a, a site visit, sort of like we did today. And we could see what the objection was to the, to the view issue. We understood what it was. And we saw this other site where the wetland was. We were told by the parties that everybody would be perfectly happy if they could have built on that site instead. The owner of the property, happened to own all three sites, said he was happy. The neighbor said, "We would be very happy that. It's a good place for it." And then the contractor and applicant said that it's a good place. So we asked them to give us some more information. We didn't think the record was very complete on why this site that everybody was willing to use instead was not acceptable. Because the record wasn't very robust on why this was really the wetland. And so we asked the parties to look into it and they did. And they got the A and R to go back and look at the site and the site engineer for the applicant took a look at it. And sure enough, it turned out that the site was accepted and that A and R had mistakenly classified it as a wetland on which you could not do any building. And after reanalysis, they concluded that, "Oh, this was okay." And the parties have all through this worked together in the sense that they kept their relationship civil. They all wanted, in a sense, the same thing. They all wanted to see solar. They, they were like, "We're opposed to solar," you know, across the board or anything like that. And the applicant wanted to build solar and yet profit was a part of the reason for doing it. And so they kept their relationship civil. And eventually, they were able to come to a conclusion that they thought this other site was okay. Now, they then proposed to move to the other site. It turned out that there was a, a citizen who now objected to the new site. And the applicant worked with that citizen to address what the citizens' concerns were and make some changes to the project that had to do with the war mitigation, essentially more truism. And also the removal of, there was, the rows ran like this away from where this person was. And they removed one or two of the rows that were closer to where this person had his home. And to me, it represented a real win-win.
Was that through mediation or facilitation?
In this case, it was, it was neither. It was, we saw that there was a problem. We realized that the parties didn't wanna see a solar project get built and they didn't wanna go there. And they, they, they worked it out. Now, there are a lot of reasons why that's not this case.
Right.
Partly because this, that was what's called a net metering case. This is what's called a standard offer case. And so it's a case that comes up through a special contract provision that the, that the commission enforces and follows the statute in which step one is to get a contract approved where an applicant makes an application, says, "I wanna build the project. Here's where I wanna build it. I have the control of the land so that I can build it there and I will sell the electricity from this project at certain price." And if their price is the best price among all the projects that are applying, and there's a limit to how many projects you can approve, then they get the contract approved. Then they come and ask for a CPG. So it's different. The other one, that has a net metering project, could have been located anywhere and there wasn't any pre-existing commitment to it. So I don't, I don't mention it as an example of what can be done specifically in a case like this, but rather that people of goodwill wanting to accommodate everyone's interest were able to work together. And the feelings were strong when they were, when it looked like it was gonna have to go on this one hillside and there was no option. So I, I just, I want you all to know that. And nobody will be penalized if nothing like that happens here. It's not, it's not like that. But we do have these options of mediation and facilitation that you can take advantage of if, if you decide you want to. All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's been a very instructive day. And Richard.
Thank you for coming all this way.
I don't mind at all. I live in Wetherspoons, so I didn't have to...
Oh.
If, if you did get a copy of these, please take one. And if you know others who you think might wanna have a copy of these, you're welcome to take them. I'm just gonna take them back to the office over there. If you know other people. And please remember, if you do want to intervene, the deadline is just gonna be there.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Yes, I think it's the only thing, the air conditioner was so loud.
Yes.
That they can't hear.
I appreciate it.
All summer long.
Yeah.